Okay, this meeting's gonna come to order. If, uh...we would like everybody to turn their cellphones on silent mode, so there's no interruptions. Mark also has passed some flyers around and he didn't have enough for everybody, so they're just gonna be passed around and go from row to row, so everybody can have an idea on what he'd be talking about. This meeting's called to order. We're gonna say, "Stand for the pledge." Pledge of the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Earl Cole. Jerry Hunt. Terry Bean. Jennifer Purda is absent tonight. Gisele. Renee Wilfong, present. Terry Moss. Olivia Fox, present. Mr. Parkman will be speaking next. I ask everybody to hold their questions till he's done talking, and then he'll answer anybody's question that has anything they wanna ask him. And I don't want anybody over-talking somebody else. Raise your hand, uh, stand, give your name, and then you can ask any question you'd like. Mr. Parkman, floor's yours.
Good evening. Thank you for, uh, asking me to come and talk to the town people about what I'm proposing to do.
Could you speak up? We can't hear you back here.
I know when the conversation of trailers gets involved, people get extremely concerned. I'm able to rent houses out here. I have a difficult time with people buying a house. When they come out to rent and they find out that Kingsford Heights is a nice place, they don't have a problem staying. I've had multiple realtors on my houses that say people won't even come to Kingsford Heights to look at Kingsford Heights as a house because it's in Kingsford Heights. Everybody here is aware that Kingsford Heights has a reputation that, in my opinion, is an inaccurate one. Maybe it was that way 50 years ago, but it's not that way now. So, from a business standpoint, I'm thinking, "What can I do to get people into the town of Kingsford Heights to try to improve my business, to try to improve the town, to improve the enrollment at the school, more sewer customers, more water customers, everything that the town needs to grow?" So, when I was young, my aunt lived in Bunker Hill. She owned a single white herself on her own lot. She worked at Grissom Air Force Base, and it was her home. And I thought, "Well, that would be affordable living. Maybe I could do that." And the more I thought about it, I decided I did not want to sell to anybody because I would lose control over it. I don't want to have an investment that depreciates, that brings the rest of my property value down. So, when I came and talked to the town council, I proposed putting in some single white trailers on the lots that are planted, 97 feet wide, 97 feet deep. The homes that I would propose would be 16 by 76. They're three-bedroom homes. You take 97 and you minus 16 from it, that's 81 feet from one house to the next house. There are houses in town that are five feet apart already. I know I've heard, I got a letter here that, uh, Mr. Francis sent out, uh, talking about spurting everybody's property values. As the largest landowner in Kingsford Heights with over 125 acres, it would make no sense for me to do anything to lower property values. It'd be a bad business decision. It's just foolish. So, I feel like I can do this. We would maintain the facility. We would mow the grass. We would keep it up because I don't wanna lose control and have my property values go down. The plan would be, once people came to Kingsford Heights, rented what I would call a starter home. They've got a husband and a wife and a young child. Then maybe they decide, "You know what? Kingsford Heights isn't a bad place to live. We really like it out here. It's peaceful. People are nice." The same thing that's happened to the people that I've already rented to. They believe Kingsford Heights is a better place than what they thought it was before they moved out here. So, if this is a starter home, then in two or three years, they decide, "You know what? We'd like to build a house out here. We like this community." Well, we've got plenty of lots all over the place in town where we could build houses. We've got the subdivision, Park Place Two. We've got lots all over the place that, uh, would be available for that. You know, as development proceeds, you know, each time a road gets paved, that's more money from the state for the town for the infrastructure. So, as the roads that I've already got back there become paved, that helps our street department. Uh, we've already talked a little bit about the sewer and the water. Those costs are going up every year. There's nothing you're gonna do about it. Those costs are going up every year. So, the only way to keep those costs in check are to spread it out over more customers. Same thing with the school. I've been told the school is down 60 kids in the last three or four years. If it keeps going down like that, they're gonna close the school. I don't think anybody wants to see that either. As far as property value goes, there are already houses in town that are being sold for $10,000 to $15,000. All over the place in town. That would be, in my opinion, a bigger concern than what I'm looking to do back here in the back, across from the mini-storages, away from everybody else, the hardest part in town, that, uh, you know, we're not selling these. So, there's never gonna be anything there that they can use as a...to use with their appraisal. Normally, you have to appraise a like-kind. If you have somebody that builds a 2,500 square foot house in town that's a three-story, they're not gonna use the house next to it that was built in 1941 as a count. It doesn't happen like that. That's not the way appraisals work. They have to do like-kind. And again, I just talked to the town. It was an idea. I was only able to meet two members at a time. I had two meetings, and then the council asked me if I would come and explain to the town what I wanted to do. There's nothing backhanded here. I don't play games like that. It's not been my experience, as the town here does, the council. I'm just trying to do something to increase the number of people that are in Kingsford Heights.
The floor's open for any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Roger.
Why wasn't this done in a public forum? What do you think it is?
Yes.
Uh, this is a town council meeting. A lot of people aren't gonna say what they feel because they'll be shut down by the council.
That's not true.
That's how it is.
That's not true.
That's how it is. This is already a done deal. We're just going through smoking mirrors right now.
No, it's not a done deal. This still has to...this goes through the planning commission.
Who's the fifth member on the planning commission? Have you picked them yet, or are you waiting for somebody you want?
That's on the agenda for this evening.
It's already been picked?
No, it hasn't been picked.
I mean, Jennifer's not here. She can't answer the question for you. Have you picked a fifth person yet?
That person...that's not part of what we're discussing right now, Roger. That is on the agenda for later.
It is, because the planning commission has to approve this before it goes to you people.
But it hasn't even been set up to go to the planning commission yet. This is an idea. Mr. Parkman is here to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Mr. Parkman, I have a question. Is that trailer gonna depreciate every year?
Not in my case.
Not in your case?
Oh, wait a minute. One at a time.
I know. I have, I have realtors that are good friends of mine, and they said, "If you put one trailer back there, that's the end of the integrity of this town because they're gonna be popping up all over town, and everybody's property value will drop."
But here's the thing that I would argue that...
I understand where you're at. You're a businessman. You got stuff on that property. You can't do nothing with it. Why don't you just put some smaller homes out there instead of trailers?
And, and I'm not stuck with the property. I don't feel like it.
You're not for sale.
What I'm trying to say, through the town council and through the planning commission, there would be one specific spot where I could put a trailer. There's already an ordinance for trailers, okay? So, that's why you go to the planning commission. It would have to be, have a legal description. It can only be in one area. It couldn't be spread out all through town.
You have to get rid of the ordinance to put one trailer back there.
I would disagree with that.
No, you don't. That's what they're gonna do, and once they do that, the floodgates are open.
Yeah. You guys can answer that later, Roger. The places that I've been, that's not the way it is.
They're low-errands here. They can't answer nothing right now.
You have ordinances in every town, every municipality, and you always have a special exception.
Can you take the trailers there? You live in Westville. You've got a nice home over there. Why don't you put the trailers around there if it's such a lucrative deal?
And you know what? I worked over there in that trailer park for six months when I first got out of high school, that new Germus State. And it's one of the nicest parks around.
Not for people I live there.
That I drove through there the other day, and the houses are still right on top of each other. That's not what I'm looking for.
But it's not in town. This is gonna be on our back door.
Sure, it is in town. That's part of the town limits of Westville. I can guarantee that. That's a fact.
I think you're just trying to sell us something we don't want. And as a community, I think we ought to stand together and really look into this deeper as far as the legal matters.
Brian?
This is, Mr. Parkman, this is a residential community. When I bought my property out here 17 years ago, I came into it as a residential property. That's not a residential structure. A trailer is not considered a residential structure. If you decide that you wanna put a bunch of trailers back there, that means, number one, in our community, we're gonna have a whole ton more of traffic coming through. And let's be honest with you. Let's be honest here. Renters are not the best people to actually be in houses, 'cause a lot of them, I'm not saying everybody's, I don't want anybody to get upset with me by saying this, but a lot of them don't care. So, you're gonna, you're gonna end up putting a bunch of people back there that don't care in a residential stru...in a residential area that I live in. So, I'm gonna have a bunch of other cars that already speed up and down the way with my grandkids out front playing. And 17 years ago, when I moved here, I didn't have to worry about that kind of stuff. If you wanna do this, why don't you seriously consider maybe putting some duplexes back there that are considered residential structures and still continue to do it? Not only that, we have problems with your...you started the park place up there, and you haven't started completing that. So, what makes us think that you're gonna start a trailer park out here and gonna finish that? Because as...no, listen. Because as a resident here, I'm not speaking as the fire chief neither. I don't want that clear on record. I'm, I'm talking as a resident here. Who's gonna pave the roads out there? You? And then who's gonna maintain them?
It becomes the town.
Right. It becomes the town's responsibility.
Town's Lord.
So, wait, wait, wait. Let me, let me talk. You're gonna put the sewers out there, correct? The sewers are already out there, so that's also gonna be maintained by the town. What about the hydrants that are out there? The hydrants don't even work out there. We can't even get hydrants to work in town. How are we gonna get them to be working out there?
All right, I'll answer a few of your questions if you'll allow me to.
Thank you.
The hydrants obviously would have to be replaced before anything could happen on my end, just like I did here at Park Place. Now, your, your opinion of Park Place not being finished, I'm not real sure where you get that from. I did everything that I was supposed to do there. The road is paved. The hydrants do work. Those are new hydrants.
They're not new hydrants. I test those hydrants. I test those hydrants every year. Those hydrants have cracked bells. They haven't worked since day one.
Well, I can show you the receipt from your water department that billed me for those hydrants being put in. So, you know, that, that's not on me. Those were brand-new hydrants put in by your water department that I paid for. Just like the road, I paid to pave the road, and then in turn, the state gives the town of Kingsford Heights money back through the gas tax to pay for taking care of that road, just like it is in any municipality. So, anything that I do, I pay for, and the money comes back to the town through the state.
There's a lady up here who I'm not taking too...
Yes. I live right near this. I live at 300 Ed's Road. I am totally against it. Um, we have speeding cars on the road. You're gonna add one. My home value is gonna drop. I called my insurance today. And my value, my fall will drop at least $10,000 with that trailer park going in, right because of...
Tell you why?
Because a trailer park is not a structured home.
This isn't a trailer park. I think...
Yes, it is. The day they are run wheels, they can move.
For the people that have taken the time to look at the drawing that was handed out, with the 80 feet in between it, I've yet to see a trailer park that looks like that anywhere. Typically, at a trailer park, you stick them as close together as possible for the return on investment. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do so...
This is just gonna be a bigger trailer park?
Roger, you're not called upon. Man?
That's why you can't have a meeting?
Yes.
Yes. I live on Grayton Road. I've been here since 1976. I continue to see more and more rentals and more and more homes not taken care of. I don't know if you call them slum landlords. I'm not sure. But they're not well-managed. Take a look right across the road from Town Hall. And I live on Grayton Road. I have to drive by all of them. My other concern is Grayton Road are the people that are speeding. Not only is it the people that are just living near us, also the town employees. I have mentioned it two times to town employees to slow down. We have small children. I have a grandson, and I would like people to slow down. So, my concern is also of more traffic going that way. We already have the town employees lying by my house because it's all paved straight down there to the sewer plant. I don't want any more traffic, and I don't really want any more rentals.
Okay, so, I have, I believe, six rentals already in town already, and I believe that they're as well-kept as any house out here. As far as the traffic...
What's the address? What is the address? 'Cause I'd like to pick a ride from those.
There's two out in Park Place, and they're going over by the street.
Do you want the address?
Because we don't, we don't enforce the landlords out here not to take care of the property.
Well, I, I can't speak for the other landlords. All I can speak for is myself. And again, it's an investment for me. It doesn't make any sense for me to allow it to be, to become junk. It, it's just foolish for people to think that, that as much as I have invested out here, that I would allow it to be.
I have a good friend. I have a friend that works in one of those.
You think you're right, is it?
And they make a lot of money on rentals. They do not repair them. They do not do, keep up with the upkeep. So, I know about slum landlords, and that is my concern because of the high number of rentals in this town and what I see them looking like.
I, I would like to think that since I've been here, I've done nothing but improve the property value of Kingsford Heights. I've done nothing but help this town, in my opinion. There might be some people that feel different, but I'd like to see some of those instances where I urge the community because, again, it's foolish for me to do that. As far as the traffic goes, the other gentleman who put duplexes in all houses, the traffic's gonna go up no matter what I put back in.
Well, we don't...it'd be nice if...I don't know. I'm just, I am concerned, and I'm very concerned about the traffic because it appears right now we can't control the traffic now on Grayton Road. I don't know how it's gonna be in the future.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
We tried...not...go ahead. Not...
How many units are you proposing?
One, for starters.
I'm not asking for starters. I'm asking, "How many units are you proposing?"
I don't know, sir. I, I have no idea. The, the plan, again, in my opinion, in my head, when I came up with this, is to get people to Kingsford Heights and hopefully go from this to a permanent structure. That, that's what I'm hoping for. But to get people to come to Kingsford Heights and buy a house, I'm not having any luck with that. Like I said, I've, I've got realtors that say when they tell people where the house is, they won't even come and look at it because it's in Kingsford Heights, which I think is a unfair way of looking at it, but that's the fact. That's the way it is.
Well, if you're saying it, you go put up one unit, then the ordinance would say one unit, no more.
Ben?
Yeah, my question is, is...if this goes in, you, you pass the ordinance to have these trailers put in, what happens when some guy across town's got five lots and says, "Hey, you did it for him. Now do it for me." And when you don't wanna do that, he's just gonna take you to court and sue you, and he's gonna win.
Hell, he'll own all the other lots.
Ben, I don't think it works like that, just like my development in Westville, okay? I did development right behind McDonald's in Westville.
This ain't Westville, old.
So...
Keep it in Westville.
When, when I went to the town council then and asked for what I wanted to do, they gave me certain variances for that property. Just because I've got my subdivision there doesn't mean somebody on the other end of town's gonna have their subdivision. It, it doesn't work like that, you know? It, uh, each project has to stand on its own. And so, in my opinion, being back there in the corner, kind of a wave behind the trees, you know?
So, if they go mess with all that, that's what's gonna happen.
Hey!
Hey!
No, don't talk out of turn, okay? Let him, let him speak.
You know, I, I don't know what would look better. Again, we're, we're just proposing an idea right here. We're not at the planning commission yet. You know, if there was a need for a fence to go up along there, if that would make people feel more comfortable.
No.
No, no, no.
I, I think probably the biggest problem with people is it's, it's a trailer. I don't think it's the property size or anything else. I think it's just the fact that it's a trailer, and they know it.
It depreciates.
The nice thing about that, from my perspective, is if it doesn't work, I can move it. I don't have a big problem.
No, you won't. No, you won't. Once those are in there, they're gonna stay. You're making beaucoup rent off those at our expense. And I've been, and as far as the upkeep, I've been to one of those on the other side of the town, and that was a pigsty inside, and that went on for eight years. Explain that one. I wouldn't have ate off the kitchen in that house. And those will be just like that down the road. And, and I think, didn't you sell that place over in Westville? That subdivision?
Yes, sir. Sold the lot. Didn't have a problem selling.
Friend of mine was on...Joe and I was over there two weeks ago. There was grass that high at all them apartments. There were junk cars, and there's still one sitting there with two flat tires. That's been four weeks ago.
Which apartments did those be, sir?
The ones right behind the McDonald's that you built.
There's not eight apartments there. There might be a couple duplexes, but there's no...
All their duplexes. You built them, didn't you?
No, sir, I did not. Those were planned. That was supposed to be commercial, and somebody changed it and put those in.
Just like you'll do out here.
But again, that, that's something, you know, the town approved that. How, how can you hold me...
That was their stupidity. I said that was their stupidity.
Okay. Next. Vicki, next.
From the concerned citizens of Kingsford Heights and surrounding communities, we are presenting you the town board and Mr. Parkman with this petition showing signatures that we, the residents and homeowners of Kingsford Heights, prefer that trailers or mobile homes be kept out of our town. The signatures show the community asking our elected board to listen.
And I was aware of that petition, and the one thing that I tend to have to ask, you know, Kingsford Heights has a reputation that's an unfair one. It's happened for a long time. People think it's not a very good place. They don't know the facts. And I, I was kinda surprised that this petition went out before everybody knew the facts of, you know... It's the same scenario with the other facts, wasn't it?
We don't want that. You're saying that trailers, buses, mobile homes, stairs, they didn't last.
I would agree.
And we're just concerned that...we are concerned about our property values. We've lived here for a long time, a lot of us. A long time. And, you know, we, we love our town, and we know the stigma that comes with the being in our town, and we've tried to, I love that, and I feel that we have, but we just don't leave that added, that added stuff to it. That's, that was the reason for the petition, and that was the reason for a lot of us to show our concern.
I don't know what you do. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Can we have your name?
Hi, my name is Rita Beatty. I've been a local realtor for 31 years in the area. I was raised in Kingsford Heights. I graduated from Kingsford Heights Elementary School. I take offense to the fact that you keep stating that Kingsford Heights has a reputation and that houses don't sell for more than $10,000. I hope you're aware that I just sold a house out here for over $100,000 in the last six months. There's been three... There have been three homes that have sold in the past eight months over $100,000. The least expensive home that has sold in the past year was $20,000. So, wherever you got your facts from, these were open-market homes. So, whether, you know, you found something somewhere else, I'm not aware. But you must have had the wrong realtors listing your homes, is all I can say. Because when you get raised out in Kingsford Heights, I pushed Kingsford Heights. There's nothing wrong. My parents still live here. We moved here when I was five years old, so they're still here, along with many of the other people that I recognize tonight. I still live across the street from Kingsford Heights. I live in Tracy. So, I do not find that offensive. The police department patrols us also, along with here, so we do have adequate situations here. But the problem with you bringing mobile homes into the area is their personal property. These folks will gain no tax base from that whatsoever, except for the land that you're paying for now. They will get the same tax amount for the infrastructure that you're gonna put in that they now have to pay the fire department to take care of, that they have to maintain the roads, the snow plowing. Everything that needs to be done is gonna have to be maintained by the town that they're not gonna get tax money from because you're going to get the personal property tax unless you're planning on making these total real estate, putting a permanent foundation in. I also am a 12-member member on the LaPorte County Plan Commission. So, therefore, I've seen Mr. Parkman a few times there. But LaPorte County does not allow mobile homes. They do not allow mobile homes. I brought all the ordinances with me, if anybody wants to see them. They do not allow mobile homes in LaPorte County. If you even want a mobile home, you have to get a variance to come in and have a really good reason. And maybe it's for an elderly parent to live next door or something of that sort. Otherwise, no mobile homes are allowed in LaPorte County, unless they're in a park. And yes, I agree with many of these folks that have said tonight that you own plenty of property. I pulled up all your tax properties. I know what you own. I know you own a 60-some acre parcel that's right close to the Westville Park that you were talking about. That's a wonderful mobile home park. Make yourself a mobile home park. Collect all the rent you want. Collect all the tax base you want over there. Keep it over there. You're saying that these are renters' starter homes so that you can sell them another home later? I thought you just said you couldn't sell them homes out here. You have a problem with that. I agree with progress totally, but I completely disagree with this type of progress that you're calling progress. Projects are based on what you set forth. If the town allows you to set a mobile home out here, the next person that wants one, and they meet those same standards, they'll be allowed. Otherwise, the town will be sued. LaPorte County has had many lawsuits for the plan commission trying to pick and choose. You can't do that. It's not allowed. I'm sure there's plenty more here that I have, but, um, I think that's probably it for, for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Rita, I'd like to answer a couple of your questions.
Miss Beatty, would you do me a favor, please?
Sell on your home?
Would you give me two of the addresses of those homes that went over $100,000?
Here you go. I have a right here.
So, Rita, I'd like to answer a couple of your questions that you had. I didn't say that houses don't sell for more than 10. I said there are houses that sell for 10 in Kingsford Heights, and those are used as comps in appraisals for other houses. Now, I'm sure you're aware of houses that have sold out here for $10,000 to $15,000. I believe Mrs. Johnson's estate maybe just got sold not too long ago in the air auction.
Those were not on the open market, and that's why I refr...I said it was on the open market. And yes, appraisals, as you mentioned earlier, appraisals do stick within the area. If they can't find something in that area, yes, then they do.
And as far as the realtors go, you well know, those were on the MLS, and I don't know how many people you brought out here to show my houses, but none that I'm aware of. And they're in MLS, so any realtor could have picked... And they're in MLS, so any realtor could have picked that up and brought somebody out. When you said that I said I can't sell homes, again, I tried to be specific. I can't get people to come and look at the house because they say it's Kingsford Heights. Once people are out here and they've lived here for a while, and they realize it's a good community and a nice place to live, they don't have a problem doing it. The only way I'm having any success with that is to get a renter first and then going into a house. I've had, uh, I think five houses that I built to sell, and I sold two, and the rest I had to turn in rentals because I wasn't able to sell. So, and that's experience, you know? I mean, I'm not just making things up. I've seen you on the plan commission. You know, I know what the rules are. I'm just here asking, okay? Not trying to push anything on anybody. It's an opportunity, and I'm just here asking. That's why the council asked me to come and present this well ahead of time. All the purpose of me being here tonight.
They should have asked us first.
You know, if you were allowed to put trailers back there, that doesn't mean that fifteen years ago, you're not gonna leave this area for better things because your company has grown, and you sell it, and then it becomes a shit. People don't take care of it maybe like you do.
Fair enough, but as I drive through town, are you telling me that there's...
You can't have a guarantee.
Are you telling me that there's no places in town that are like that right now? That's the part that I find annoying. I don't understand. People saying it's like it's unheard of, I mean, there's places in town that look really bad, a lot worse than I'm gonna keep mine.
I agree, and maybe, and maybe you would take care of everything, but that doesn't mean your firm won't grow and you'll move out of the area or, okay, I'm done with this, I've had it with those renters, and you'll sell the property. Okay, if you sell the property and the trailers that are on them, we don't know what we're gonna get stuck with, and we'll have a whole other park full of them.
And I understand that, Miss Sarah, but it seems odd to me that, unless you own the house next door to you, you don't know who's gonna be there either. I'm sure there's multiple people in here that have had neighbors that have moved in that weren't as good as the neighbors that they had prior.
But maybe we had one neighbor, but we didn't have a hundred of them. Park that edge in the road.
Mark, when you were just talking about that, you mentioned houses as neighboring. Exactly, that's what we want, houses, not trailers. I mean, I don't know why that concept is, I know it's all about money. That's all it is, bottom dollar. You lost out on the intermodal, and you wanna make a buck off our backs. That's what's going on, clear cut and simple.
How far did you go back there from the, um, storage units? All the way to where Johnson's? All the way toward the old Johnson's building?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not a cap. The, the grass is way too high up there.
At the Johnson building?
Yeah, the Johnson building, but I'm talking next to it, all the way to the storage unit, the old Johnson building? So it used to be yours. Yeah, yours, I'm talking about the other question, the storage unit.
Listen, folks, I have lived out here longer or any that long as any single person. I was out here in nineteen forty-eight, when the houses were first allowed to be sold. The houses had to be green with green roofs or brown roofs because then were Russians coming over. I know that this town, every street in it, was named by Eleanor Roosevelt, and they are named for towns that existed at the time, okay? I also know that later on, at the very beginning in nineteen forty-eight, the rule was, no trailers in town. Later on, after it became no longer a corporation, Kingsford Realty, it was my, my father-in-law and Mike Long's father, and then it was established, no trailers in town. The only place you will find that there is small space between two houses is if they had been a duplex. And those duplexes that were built in nineteen forty-two were there. They changed the rule now, you have to have a minimum of fifteen to twenty-five foot setback and all other kinds of things. I remember when the town decided, let's sell all the property behind the Catholic church, and Dr. Stiller and Dr. Blair bought it. They decided they were gonna dig up all the plumbing, all the sewer lines, all the concrete and put it in piles because they were gonna make it a farm. That was a dream, Mark, it was kinda like your dream, when you bought all of the lots in block form that you bought from the lawn estate to build houses. But your dream didn't come true. It didn't happen. So now you decide that you wanna do this. It has never been that we can have trailers in town. Never. Every single ordinance ever was devised for this town. It made it very clear, no trailers in town. It had to be a house. A house could have been brought in possibly on part of a trailer. I remember when we had an area down by Roanoke in Severn that was called the Cracker Boxes. Remember that? Loved the people well. They came in. I think there's five out of the whole town that remain, but they are no longer in the form they were. But I'm just telling you, we can't do this to this town. We can't do this to these people. All that will happen is it will become the place that some people may say is a poorer area.
Trailer trash.
Is trailer trash? We do not want it. I'm sorry, you had a beautiful area up in Westville. Put the trailer park there. There's a trailer park on the north end, there's a trailer park on the south end. Anyone who wants to have a trailer near us, go across the street, right across Highway Six, cross the bridge, and there's a nice trailer park. We don't meet 'em here.
A lot of them live there.
All of them are.
Thinking back, if you are so concerned about people having nice places to live, and the people that live here are homeowners, and there's renters, there are so many renters out there that have good credit, that cannot afford or find a home right now. If you are interested in doing something out here, why can't you do owner financing? There are so many people that wanna rental with an option to buy. These people, you would run credit check, everything else, background check, everything else, and there may be renters that are living in these so-called slumlord rentals in this area that would move into one of your nice houses. They can't afford a down payment, they may have good credit, charge them two hundred dollars more a month towards their down payment and give them that dream. If they have no skin in the game, they don't care. We put a house on the market on Saturday. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath house, completely redone, and there are people fighting over it for eight fifty a month because it's nice, it's beautiful, it's new. They want a nice house. They don't wanna pay for worse scum. And it's in the heights. It's in the heights.
So you're not having any problem getting renters either?
No, but you have to let them in the beginning. We do a background check.
So do I.
We do a credit check.
So do I.
No issues. Do you have a credit-free lease addendum that says you mess up or anybody that's with you messes up? I have the right to kick you out, 'cause in this town right now, you've got one bad renter going to the next house, going to the next landlord, going to the next landlord. Then those landlords get burned out, the house is trashed, and that's why it's ten thousand dollars for a house. We are right across the street from the one that sold at auction. That thing is a complete gut. You might as well tear it down and start all over again. That is not a home. It is not, now, you know. So what I'm saying is, if you want something good, start out small. Start out with two, three homes. Build those, or even have modular homes on foundations. Have people come in that are renters in the community that want to buy, but there's nothing they can buy right now because they don't have a down payment. There are so many people that want to do a rental with an option to buy, but most financing is twenty percent down. People out here don't have twenty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars right up front.
There's actually three homes that I have in the heights that is set up exactly like that.
Well, why don't you do something like that? That would be such an asset. We manage the property for my father-in-law. He was an original owner in Candlewood. We have two properties we manage from him that are right across from your storage units. These people moved out here from other areas into the heights 'cause they wanted a beautiful home. Give people beautiful homes, they will come out here, they will spend the money. I'm just very passionate about this because I wish I had a town like this by me. All the taxes that you pay on all of the properties and all the land you have is less than I pay on a single-family home in the suburbs of Chicago. And my lot is a hundred by one-twenty. I went and looked through all your properties, and you have a lot of great space for a lot of great, loving people, but bringing trailers to this town will destroy the beauty of what I've seen in this town for the past twenty-five years of knowing my husband. So I'm saying people would live here, people would come out here. The people that we have renting our houses, that we have, and we're not slumlords, have all come from LaPorte, Lake Station, the people that are moving into this house, and we've rented it in four days most likely, they have to go through the credit and background check, but you vet them in the beginning. You make sure they're good people that would live up to the standards of this town. Don't rent to just anybody and make it crap. That's what the people are saying here. People are dying to have a beautiful home, but if they have no skin in the game, they don't care. And the landlords that are out here, some of them, I'm not saying all of them, but they will rent to anything that breathes. And in reality, I don't want the neighbors to dislike my father-in-law because he has rented to people that are not desirable and do not love the homes.
That's a bad business decision, and I would agree with you. I don't want renters that are just coming...
But if you vet them and they have good credit and you give them a beautiful home, they're gonna wanna live out here. We've done that for every single house. When the people have moved out in the past year, they've moved in, I give it to you beautiful, you give it to me beautiful. But if you give it to them looking like a piece of crap, that's what you get, and you don't get your rent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I've been out here over seventy-four years myself. My family's raised out here. I seen around a couple of a lot ago. I live in a trailer, she's in a trailer park. That's where it should be, shouldn't you, out here? Sir, if I, what I'd like to tell you is don't put the trailer park out here, how about coming here and tearing these slumlord houses down and put houses in there? There are a lot of houses out here that should be torn down, trashed, not being taken care of, had to take care of, burn them down wherever you're doing, and put houses, nice houses in there. It'd help the town better with the trailer park. And a question, another question I'd like to ask, you said you're gonna bring in one trailer? What's the purpose of bringing one trailer? You mean, if you really want a trailer, it ain't gonna help you out here.
We're gonna start with one.
You're not starting at all.
That's a floodgate right there.
You can't do a game up with one, you don't start with ten, my...
From a business standpoint, it would make sense to bring in ten at once.
You start with one, they're gonna be lined up from that storage unit all the way to nap and eat. That's what's gonna happen. You can't convince anybody anything else.
I'm gonna start with something positive, muddy booey. I've known Mark for several years. What Mark has done in this town so far has been positive. That being said, Mark, put these trailers on a simple slab foundation, make them permanent, still bring your bet, your people in on a get-to-know Kingsford Heights purpose. You'll have a little bit more invested, but it still will get people in here to rent to start out. It'll kind of be the middle ground and make everybody happy.
Rosalie, Rosalie, don't you work for Mark?
No, I know. Oh, I know, I'm sorry. Take care of the shed, but...
Work for Mark, I can understand your opinion.
But, but...
Thank you.
If, you wouldn't have the, if you take it off the trailer base and you put it on a slab and it's now not a mobile home in over there? It's just a mobile home on a front lawn. If you take it off the wheel? Maybe that's the duplexes they were talking about. But something that's still more economical for you to build, more economical for a person to get into and still get them acquainted with Kingsford Heights.
But you bought a lot of, lots of lots originally, Mark. You know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, why then would you decide that, okay, if this isn't selling, I gotta buy some more?
No, see, I did this back here before I bought the blocks that you're talking about. And in my mind, it's two different projects, okay? Like Park Place Two, the covenant state, it has to have a concrete driveway, has to have attached garage, and the cost goes up, okay? So not everybody can afford that. So I bought the lots in town. Doesn't have to have a garage, doesn't have to have a concrete driveway, those aren't in the covenant, okay? This part out here, it's in the covenant, so I have different levels. And this, in my mind, was another level to get people, I can start here, then they can go to the houses without the garage, or if things are going well for them, both people are working, they wanna have a house with the garage, and they go in Park Place. There's a lot of different options, but for me, I need to get them here first. And as the lady said, she has no problem getting a renter, and I haven't either. Having a renter hasn't been a problem, but I have not had much luck selling a house. Building a house as a spec has not been a good business decision for me.
So you should build and rent.
In a sense, that's what I'm trying to do.
Trailer in, I'm sorry, I don't care if we take the wheels off of it, still a trailer.
Coming back to her speeding problem down by the road, we're just gonna end up at it. What are we gonna do about law enforcement? I mean, you're putting a law enforcement on.
It'll watch the roads, which is gonna cost the town more.
You gotta get one of them out of the office first.
I would say from my perspective, if the concern is the speeding, it doesn't matter what I put back there. If it's the duplexes that he recommended, the single-family, it doesn't matter.
What's the point you have? Why are you trying to sit in church?
But you know, I see them all through the night, but you know something? Um, people has been speeding here. I've been here about sixteen, seventeen years, um, and I've seen people speeding here since I've been here. It just didn't start yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
It's been going on. Dix, Francis, one bad two with, uh, that was, and... Right, so that's something that we can work on, absolutely. Right, and it's the people within the town that's doing the speeding, it's not just one individual. So, you know, we have to look at this thing, you know, from...
Very. Perry, are you, are you voting for this? Are you for this?
I wanted to since Mr. Reese.
Are you for this?
I did, I did wanted to say something on behalf of the town council myself.
Well, that's why this should be a public forum and not a council meeting.
Can I speak, please? Because you have spoken all night.
You ramble all the time.
Okay, will you allow me to speak? Thank you.
You're a renter.
Thank you. No, I'm not a renter. I have been approved to buy my home.
You gotta win the next election.
And not only that, not only that, I got other problems. So I'm sorry, your Facebook doesn't know my business.
I don't have Facebook.
Oh, obviously you do. That's what I wanted to say.
I was buying you the white house and you.
I'm glad to see all of you guys out.
Steve, that's for Mr. Reese out, please.
Okay, well, you guys have fun. The trailer park's coming because he's bought up that.
Well, uh, well, obviously we have, you're rising, everybody's true. Anyways, I would like to say this. First of all, I'm glad that you all came out tonight. It's a great day to see everybody out here. One of the things I wanted to, on behalf of the town council myself, we know, and some of them back there that's talking, know how this works. You have the planning committee, the zoning board, and the town council. A rumor got out, it goes to a Facebook page. If you don't agree with the page, you get kicked off. So I just wanna share.
Shut up, Terry.
I wanna share with you guys, I wanna share with all of you.
Steve, Mr. Axton's out.
He's not taking him out. I want him out.
Who?
You.
So what?
That was a tall one.
So is he. What's he doing? Let me shut him up.
The biggest administrator that know what's going on here.
Yeah, but everyone.
That's why this should have been a private forum and not a council meeting. They control everything at this meeting.
Everybody, they're talking out of turn. They're not called upon. It's not fair to the rest of you that are holding your hands up that have not had a say-so yet or opinion.
Okay, may I finish, please? I would just like to say, on behalf of the town council myself, there is a Facebook page. And what I was, as I go back, we, there was an ideal, a vision page to us from Mr. Park. And he's a great man because I rented from him, and I'm glad I did because now I can buy my own. I love Kingsford Heights. I love everybody in, and Kingsford Heights. I would just like to say. I would just like to say that we have made no decision about anything because we know the protocol, how it has to work. But the minute it gets to Facebook, people get in an uproar. And what I see tonight is what I would like to see every town council meeting. Come out and listen. All we wanted to do was listen to it. We're not, uh, he's not on trial. We just wanted to listen and get his ideal, get the town's opinion because we believe in you guys. Brother, whatever you hear on Facebook, I disagree with. It's a lie. But I think that we are doing our best to try and better the town and the people in the town. And I can speak for myself and for the town council. We are out here and we are working to do what we have to do. Now, we're not perfect and a lot of us aren't alike, but that's okay. We still love you. But I just wanna let you know that it's good for you all to be out here to hear from us and him instead of going to Facebook. It's a terrible thing. And if you're not in agreement with them, they kick you off, and there's been a lot of people kicked off. And when you're talking about allowing people to say, that's what we're talking about. Everyone in Kingsford Heights should be allowed on their Facebook page. And everyone in Kingsford Heights should be allowed to speak what they feel. As long as you keep it, you know, well, not like some people put it on there. But when it comes time to you speaking your side, you get kicked off. That's not fair. To the town of Kingsford Heights, I'm not just talking about one individual. So I'm just asking you guys, when you hear something, you hear a rumor, come out and talk to it. We have cards. We are out here Monday to Friday. When I'm not on my job, we're out here. We're working with the town and the community. And I think we've done some great improvement. Now, some may not approve. You have, as long as you have a few that don't approve, but I believe that we're doing it awesome, Tom. And I just wanna thank you all for coming out tonight.
I don't know what you said on the board for, but you don't let him down. I don't give a damn what the lights are saying, right?
The one thing I know from the business side, though, is if you don't have the money to do it, the only way you do it is if you get more income. And so that's what I'm looking at also. You have another sewer customer, another water customer, somebody else is going to the grocery store, gas station, you know, line, needles.
This ain't something that's gonna happen overnight. This is a year or two years down the road. This is a long process that, you know, this is just an idea he's bringing to the public.
Um, okay, so about these homes don't sell this town. I personally live on Bellwood. My friend also lives on Bellwood. She's bought her house in two years. I've bought my house in five years. My husband is from this area. We moved out here from Great Town. My kids, I have three kids, my friend's three. That'll increase the traffic, bring more drugs, younger people because, oh, it's cheap. You know, it's a single trailer, let's all, let's move out there. So my kids are gonna walk to the trailer park, which is only like three blocks away. And, you know, let's say they overdose or something awful.
Actually, you got the drug problem now.
Yeah, it's just gonna increase, it's gonna increase our drugs. It's increased everything.
But I'd like to say, as the lady just spoke earlier about being very tough, that that's the way this, for me, would be, because this is my asset also. And we do a credit check. The rules would be tougher than any place else in town because I'm not gonna put up with it. You know, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna have the quote-unquote trailer park. You can drive down and you can see what those look like. They talk about slums and landlords. There's a lot of trailer parks that like that. I'm not a slum landlord and I don't wanna be a slum landlord. That's not, doesn't work with who I am. You see me here, I came off the excavator and drove right here. I didn't go home and get cleaned up. I didn't write a fancy speech. I'm out here too. You'll see me working when I'm out here with my guys. My son has just turned seventeen. He's coming on doing the same thing that I'm doing. Another lady had concern about me being ten years or fifteen years selling it. You never know what's gonna happen, but my son is coming on doing the same thing that I'm doing. And I've got a daughter that's going to school for accounting that I would assume is gonna come back and do the same thing that her mother is doing as the accountant in our business, so.
And decrease our values of our homes.
Can I ask you what you paid for your home and what your neighbor paid for hers?
She paid almost a hundred and fifty and we paid about seventy because our home was foreclosure. We put a lot of time and money.
Well, I'm pleased to hear a hundred and fifty because I've not had any experience with that, anywhere close to that, so that's great news because I've not had that lot.
Done.
Okay, it don't seem like we're getting very far, so I'd like to see a show of hand the people that are for this project.
That are what?
That are for the project.
For it? For it. Homeowners that are for the project.
Right. Now give the salesperson a hand. Nobody don't want the trailer.
Nobody, uh.
Thank you.
All right, come on. I personally know Mark, I'm like Rosalie, but I wish Mark he would build duplexes. This way they could have two houses together and have these people smashed on top of themselves and speed down the road at the same time.
You know, the vision that I have, did you get a chance to look at my layout?
Yes, I did, but I'm not for trailer parks.
I get that, but would you say that eighty feet apart is the majority? I mean, I have the vision in my head where, you know, you have a nice ten-by-twenty deck off the inside of the house, from your house to the back door, their house is basically your lawn. You get to sit there on your deck, have your grill, be with your family. The next person goes from there forward. They're not, I'm not a fan of duplexes for just what you said. They're smashed on top of each other. You know, Kingsford Heights especially out there is a very nice, peaceful area.
Yes, we wanna keep it.
And that's what I want also. I don't want them smashed on top of each other. A sticked-up house is gonna be closer to what I'm thinking.
It's not the closeness that we're concerned about. It's the trailer and the appreciate.
But don't you say that everybody that lives in a trailer is a bad person? You know, I feel the same way, but there's certain people that can't afford more than a trailer. But that doesn't make them a bad person. Greed will tell you, when I've been up to the planning commission before and gotten turned down, I went to court twice and won with two different judges because the rules weren't followed. But I've had people on that planning commission say, well, we don't want people in those houses. And they're talking about modulars. Boy, does that get on the people's skin. When somebody judges a person because of what they live in, there's a lot of people that live in a modular who are big people. I know you didn't. I was asking that question because I feel like a lot of people think, I heard it tonight, trailer trash. Just because you live in a trailer doesn't mean you're a bad person. And if it's run the right way, if it's kept nice, I think it could be an asset.
I do have one other comment I wanna make. I wanna make it to the board. Um, I've been here since nineteen seventy-six. I have come to a few meetings. I have come because I don't get things done that I've asked for. I have asked for the traffic to slow down on Great Road to, to the, um, I have asked two times. I've talked to the employees. I do see the police officer. Because I sit, you can look a look. I live at six-twenty-two Great Road. I try very hard to take care of my home and make it look very nice. I'm pretty proud of my place. I don't wanna look at a trailer. I do take care of it, and the people around me, they'll do too. What I am concerned is, I do see the police officer out. I do see him out there at nighttime, parked by your, um, what do you call it, garages. That's not where the problem is. That's not where we're heading this week. I mean, the problem on Great Road. The kids aren't out playing at that time. What is the purpose? And this is what I talked to you about before. What is the purpose of the officer sitting out there at nine o'clock at night when it's dark and there's no kids out and the town hall employees are already back home, so they're not speeding on the road? Nothing was done, I quit coming to the roads. So you ask why. I'm here tonight because I am concerned. I'm concerned about the trailers, like I was concerned about the traffic on my road and the town employees driving along with other people. I didn't ask for a stop sign down there, so at least they would have to stop before they go continue on. That's what slowed the traffic down.
Not from where?
Yeah, there's only one block.
Six hundred block is only one block.
You're heading straight out to the sewage plant and zooming on by, zooming on by.
It's only one block. Six hundred block starts with Weyland.
They do go fast, too fast for small children playing on the road in their headlock.
Are you talking about during the day?
During the day.
Okay, that's, the police, not getting out of his goddamn office because this is it with everybody.
I have asked.
All right, we've heard your complaint. This is the first, any of us has heard your complaint.
I know I've met some employees myself and actually started laughing at him. He drives the red truck. So that's why I'm here tonight. I want to, I wanna keep things here and I want our kids to be safe. And I want my house to stay nice and I like my neighbors, but I don't really think we should have tried.
The problem is they don't respect the town.
All right, and we will address this with the employees, ma'am. We're gonna take a couple more questions then.
Can you give me a ballpark estimate of what each one of these is gonna cost you to set up? I've heard a few thousand dollars thrown out there. How accurate that is, I don't know.
And I don't, I don't have those, you know, the council last time, the last time was that. I don't put a lot of time into this because I don't know if it's gonna happen. I know, I know it will cost me less than building a modular out here. I know that. And I know that I can do it quicker. Those are the two things that I know. It's gonna cost me less if I can do it quicker. So that means I can get more people out here. And again, hopefully, they see the same thing that the rest of the people do, that once they're here, it's a nice community. It's a good place to live.
Yeah, but you have all these people here saying, you know, with trailers in, it's tearing down the community.
Everybody is saying no.
My question is, is if you're in somewhere in the same ballpark, because I've seen modulars sell brand-new for twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, it's not some grand modular where you're talking about putting a renter into it. If you had that small modular that you could set on this piece of property like you're talking about onto a slab, I think you would have most of these people in here on board with you.
Is that the slab you feel like is a permanent foundation?
Yeah.
Permanent foundation? Set it on a slab?
Well, a foundation. And what would the place be your opposing rental?
I'm out of the trailer park because I do not wanna live in a trailer park. We're just three months of kitchen. We find very hard, diligently, to keep our property nice. We do not need, I mean, I'm offended that this, that it's not released and that it wasn't shot down from getting, I'm offended. That this town is not pure, I, I live here since nineteen eighty. I do not want no trailer park. Property costs a road for me. If you're only, it hasn't been moved on Sunday.
Where do you live, ma'am?
Do you live in that one?
We'd be looking out our door.
We'd be looking out the door, back at the trailer park. We don't want it. I live out of the trailer park because I do not want to live in the trailer park.
You force the residents to move from that street because, I mean, we don't want that.
This gets past our house.
One, why does that cat be anything other than a problem? And two, have you ever had any abusive business dealings anywhere on the board? Then I'm just gonna pull it too high. And I call it a home. That's the way I do it. I call it a home because not everybody's on board.
It's not real.
But if you're right, it's still a right.
But if it's right, it's still a right. You know, why isn't I, why isn't here to be, you know, but it's a name on that house. But that's, you know, you're out to make money, that's your problem, okay? It shouldn't be my problem to lose money.
I agree, and I still have the issue with, I've got more houses in town than anybody. I shouldn't say that, I don't know, maybe...
You have six.
More than I have, but I have more land than anybody, that's it. The last thing I want is to lower my property value, it's just foolish, it's a, that's a, I'm not a real smart guy, but I know that part of the world, you know? I mean, if I bring in something that's gonna lower your property value, it's gonna lower mine, and I got a lot more to lose than I do.
But yours is just the land, just the land and not the degree yet, just wait.
We're gonna move forward, this department, we appreciate your comment.
Renee.
We appreciate everybody that's come to hear Mr. Parkin.
Can I, I just wanna say...
Yeah, go ahead, John, yeah.
Okay, I apologize, Mark, okay, I apologize to you. I would've done the same thing you did. You heard about the ten thousand, the ten thousand jobs coming to KLP, I would've bought up Kingsford Heights too. Okay, I'm sorry that the jobs didn't come. I'm sorry that you're underwater and nobody wants to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house in Kingsford Heights. But trailers ain't it. There's other ways, I'm sorry. From bottom of my heart, I'm sorry to you. I understand that you're underwater.
I'm not underwater, sir, I'm, I'm holding my own, I'm okay, but I'm looking for something to do to try to prove it. I personally feel something will happen at KLP, I feel like there's too much money out there for it to not happen. So the people that come from out of town, that take a good job, that don't have an opinion of pizza nights, but are looking for someplace to rent till they get their feet settled, I would like to be ahead of that curve and not behind it.
I get that, I understand that, I get that. I also get that you were smart, you're very, very smart. Doing this makes you money. I also get that you're no different than anybody else who doesn't lay their head in this town and wants to come to this town and make money. You're just strictly a carpetbagger, but that's okay, I mean, 'cause we need carpetbaggers in this world. So, with that said, I don't agree with your trailer park idea and I wish you the best.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna continue with the rest of the meeting. Would you like to leave, if you think it's time? Well, we are gonna continue the rest of the meeting.
Hey, girl. Your puppies, I don't think they're your mom's, I need to get their hair. You just spawned them on one.
We're gonna take a five-minute break so everybody that does not wanna stay can see until we get started. I need a motion that we pass, uh, regular minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion from the executive session meeting passing the minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment other than the apartments thing? Uh, yes, Dave.
Okay, I'd like to stand up for the police department. I don't say anybody else not, but, uh, what if an officer parked out there between them? There's nothing wrong with that, he's watching the neighborhood, watching the kids, watching the family. They don't stay in the same spot all the time, they move, I used to be a deputy out there.
Joe, can you shut, excuse me a minute, can you shut that door, please? Then nobody can hear up here, thank you.
Shut the door.
They said shut up, Roger.
Okay, uh...
Thank you.
Maybe we would not have a perfect police department, I don't know, I think they do a damn good job, excuse my language, I think they do. A lot of people don't like them, a lot of people do, a lot of people have a controversy. I'm just standing up for them, I think they do a good job for what they got, three guys. But you shouldn't down them, they're out there, they're there when you need them, most of the time, you know? So I don't think people should down. If you got a problem, talk to the office. But they're out here watching the neighborhood, taking care of us, and that's their job. One other question I'd like to ask real quick, too. I've been meeting this way back years and years ago, and it probably happened here, it's usually worse. If the council here decides, let this man come in, regardless of what people feel here, you guys vote yes, it don't make a difference what we say here. So that's happened in the past and always will happen after. So the people have to take it where they like it or not. Thank you.
Thanks, man. I thought that part was closed.
It is.
Strictly for record.
Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I'm a newcomer, well, I've been here since two thousand and three, but, uh, the police department, if one of those fellows would come down on Great Road and sit across that blue building there, between, yeah, between three and six, you could write a whole lot of tickets. Because I mean, I mean, they're just flat just sitting by there constantly. Two motorcycles, I know all, they really get out and they're doing forty, forty-five miles an hour without a path. You know, they'd sit down there between those times, they'd catch them.
Well, the marshal's up here, she heard every word of it, so don't trust that, yes, sir.
I will say this much, but I love it, that Hadley and Fairmount Road, there's a stop sign there. And I guarantee you, hundreds of thousands, that if there's an officer there, those people will stop at that stop sign. If there isn't, shoot, break through it, every single time, unless there is an officer there. So they can't be everywhere. This is a pretty sizable town for three, three officers. They can't be everywhere all the time. You know? And I have literally, I counted them, eight children, counting my own, from one stop sign to the other. There's this one old lady that blows my mind, drives up and down my street at thirty-five miles an hour with a boombox going. It's like, are you serious? At ten o'clock at night, you know? For real. I'm fifty-four and I don't watch that crap.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir, yes, Alex.
I wanna thank the police department. They watched my niece's house while she was in the nursing home for six weeks and she was in the hospital for six weeks, and they watched her home and it was very kind of them to do that. And she had problems with someone breaking in, and I talked to Rich and to Steve and they watched it for her and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to terminate Troy Walker from employment, town employee.
I'm making a motion to terminate Troy Walker.
What's the reason?
All in favor?
Aye.
Department reports, clerk treasurer.
All right, town hall will be closed July fourth. Um, in your folders, you have a quote for some repairs that need to be done at the year's end.
Does anyone want to borrow room?
Yes.
Oh.
What are you gonna do? Even though we could do it for that price? Everybody, can you put that over?
Any questions?
No, it's just repair. Yeah, there's some repairs that need to be done. Right. No, this is just repair and checking what's going on. Listen, you guys, if we could get anybody to come out for repair work, the license bond in and ensure...
Is your cash flow sufficient?
Yes.
Two hundred and ten dollars. It will cost us, I mean, I know people are going, "Why are we having it hired out?" It will cost us more in labor with our employees and purchasing the materials than what this gentleman is gonna do for. I make a motion to pass this, there's never two hundred and ten dollars to have the roof repaired. All in favor?
Also, there's another quote for repair to town hall, for the side of town hall and other...
Thirty dollars there, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this bid for two thousand and thirty dollars for these repairs to be done for the town hall.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then in your folders you have two effects that need on the tank pressure. Everybody had a chance to look at both. It is from David Graves and Joe Ashington.
I make a motion to, uh, put David Graves on the tank pressure. Our reason being, David Graves has been on the town board before, he was on the planning commission before, and he knows how this town operates. And he can be an asset to the town.
I know how this town operates.
Seconded? Well, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Police department.
If I need to get a booster seat, I will, the podium's covering me up here. Our department's stats are between May twenty-first and June twenty-fifth. We answered a total of a hundred and twenty-one calls for service. I answered thirty-seven, Deputy Ames answered twenty-two, Deputy Combs answered fifty-one, and we assisted the sheriff's department with twelve calls. Out of those a hundred and twenty-one calls for service, we made three arrests. I made two of those, Deputy Combs made one. We wrote a total of five citations. I wrote one, Deputy Combs wrote five. Our ordinance violations that we addressed for the time period mentioned from May twenty-first to June twenty-fifth, we addressed sixteen properties. I addressed eight, Deputy Ames addressed two, Deputy Combs addressed six. Year-to-date since January, we've addressed a total of seventy-four ordinances. I've addressed forty of those, Deputy Ames addressed ten of those, Deputy Combs addressed twenty of those. Just as I...
Mitchell, can you shut that door, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
So I did a year-to-date comparison to see what stats are starting to get the attention. Uh, our domestic disturbances have increased this year, just in the six months that we've been here. Um, after looking at all the cases, about eighty percent of those are Facebook-related. Social media where it starts on Facebook and then it ends up being physical or resulting in a nine-one call. If you remember last year about this time, uh, we had seventeen thefts, car breakings. Those individuals were arrested. Uh, year-to-date, we have six between January and today. And four of those I can attribute to anything but breaking into cars. Uh, one was like a theft of gasoline, a drive-off from no brothers. Uh, a couple other things were internal within, within their families. Only two involved breaking into cars. Our ordinance enforcement, uh, last year at this time, we had addressed twenty-three properties. This year, we're up to seventy-four properties that we've addressed. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we had some ordinances that had to be changed, otherwise we're not gonna be enforceable by our department. A lot of our ordinances nowadays, and I've been doing this for twenty-six years, ordinances we have to treat like individual criminal cases because now there's a court that if someone doesn't like the ordinance, they're entitled to a due process, which means we go in front of a judge. And if we have to go in front of a judge, we have to make sure that we have all our information correct, that our service was consistent, and that there was no disgiven. And sometimes that takes time. Um, I've heard a couple comments about the property across from Edgemore. That is one of the properties that we are addressing right now. We have to serve them with one warning, a notice, that they're properties in violation. If we don't get any compliance, then we have to send them a certified letter. And much to my surprise, uh, with mail these days, it seems like it's taking longer for a letter to get to its destination than it used to be. I could say three days in the United States postal service would have it there. Now we're looking at five to ten days for that certified letter. But it has to be certified and it has to be signed. Then if they don't show compliance, then we write them a citation. They can contest that citation. They can say, "We felt that this is an error," or "We felt that we need to have more time." So then they petition the town board to have a hearing. If at that point they have a hearing before the violations bureau and they don't like that outcome, then they can go before circuit court. So it's a bit of a process. I will say this, the seventy-four ordinances that we addressed so far this year, I've had a lot of good compliance. We're taking a morbid, uh, a helping approach instead of, "Here's your citation, now deal with it." We're asking these people, "Why is the law getting to the level that it is? And is there anything that we can do as a police department to help you with that? We have a lot of resources. We have a lot, people have come up to us and say, "Hey, I'm just looking for something I can do for the community, what can I do?" Well, this lady here, she's eighty years old, she can't get a warrant on, you're thinking, "Go help her." Absolutely, I'll go help her, I'll take care of her the whole summer. That's one ticket we didn't have to write. That's a hundred dollar ticket that that eighty-year-old lady did not have to deal with. That's the approach I think that we're having a lot of success with and I continue to handle all ordinances in that direction. I assigned the town in the three areas. I assigned the town in the three areas. I have an area, Deputy Ames has an area, and Deputy Combs has an area. And I said, these are your beats, guys. You are responsible for your ordinances, you're responsible for your junk vehicles, all that. Get to know your people, find out what your concerns are. We all know what we have to do for the law. It's the same whether I'm doing it, Deputy Ames do it, Deputy Combs do it. Just go out there and do your job, you get to know those people. So far, we're having very good results. And I'm hoping that our community is going to start cleaning up a lot quicker. I'm starting to know some of it. But there's other areas, you know, when you have one that starts cleaning, someone else decides they're not going to. So, it's a continual process. We will continue to address it, but by no means, don't be afraid to come to that office and tell me, we got a property here, I want you to address. I don't care if you personally don't like me. Hey, but as soon as I put that uniform on, I was disliked by thousands of people back in nineteen ninety-one. I'll still listen to you. If you have a problem in the neighborhood, we'll address it. Great Road, I got ideas on how we're going to address that already. So, we'll take care of that. Our calls for service in a year's comparison, we're down. We have five hundred and fifty-three calls to date, from January to June. Last year, we had six hundred and seventeen at this point. I think a lot of it had to do with the break-ins that we were encountering. Had a couple burglaries. Those people have been arrested, even for the vehicles being entered, and they were all juveniles. So, that speaks to a different problem. And that is why are juveniles doing this and not being accounted for. So, we will continue to do the job that you want us to do, just give us a chance to do it. Does the board have any questions about the statistics? Yes?
What's our noise ordinance? When we spend with your firecrackers in the middle of the day, during night, you're scaring our dogs to death? Do we have to try and wipe our dogs for the next two months?
I'm just saying right now, fireworks eighteen. Every year. I can put on a calendar, I can guarantee that the week before July fourth, Mrs. Moss is going to ask me about the fireworks.
I got two dogs that are...
Exactly. I'm very sympathetic towards that. I'm sympathetic for our vets and our animals. But we have vets in this town that are suffering from PTSD. And there's nothing more shattered into their lives than to not expect whatever it was that'll knock the fillings out of your teeth. And if we can just exercise some common courtesy for those people, even if you don't have a vet or you don't know a vet. The animals involved as well. They have very sensitive ears, and they freak out, and they get stressed with these fireworks. Have some common courtesy and some concern for your neighbors, that's all we're asking. Now, as far as the law goes, the ordinance violations for fireworks do not exist on a local level. However, they do exist on a state level. And on a state level, and you're going to see the issue that I have with this law, but throughout the year, it's legal to set off fireworks from nine AM to eleven PM, unless we have a local ordinance. Now, that's every day. So, the state came back and said, on state holidays, it's legal to set off fireworks from nine AM to midnight. So, we can address the fireworks at midnight. Now, what I don't understand is what they updated this year, in two thousand and eighteen, between June twenty-ninth and July third, from five PM until two hours after sunset. Sunset around that time is about eight twenty-three PM, so go two hours, ten thirty. Why wouldn't you have that for the rest of the year? And just only on the little dates, the holidays and so forth where fireworks are probably going to be, you know, a little bit more prominent. Get everybody, it's done, it's over with. But on the rest of the year, you have an easier law to address, and it's done by ten thirty. I don't know why. We'll address that with our Attorney General and see why they came to that conclusion. But those are the fireworks laws. Now, as town people, you can always ask the town to draft an ordinance that prohibits altogether fireworks, put some time restrictions on. No, not for fireworks. We do have one for noise, that's eleven o'clock at night. I tell you what I will do, because every year, this is my third year here, every year this seems to be coming up, and I always say the same thing, we don't have a local ordinance on. So I will look at other municipalities, and I will present it to our board for them to consider, and in front of the town attorney as well, and see what as a community we can come up with that everybody's going to be...
See, I can see on the Fourth of July, you got a tranquilizer, you know, if your dogs study it for the blood game, but for a month, I had it on.
Yeah, and it always starts around then, June fifteenth, and goes until about a week after the Fourth of July.
And this year, the fireworks will be on July third, not the Fourth? In the Fourth?
In the Fourth, yes.
Oh, we can't consider fireworks as noise?
You can, but the two laws conflict each other. A state law, it's called the, no, no, I just forgot the name of it. But state law supersedes local ordinance, federal law supersedes state law. So we have a state law that permits it, but the local ordinance law does not. So, we have to go by the state law. Now, that is going to come to benefit on those days that I mentioned, June twenty-ninth to July third, and July fifth to July ninth, because state law says ten thirty, our noise ordinance is eleven o'clock. So, we'll actually get the benefits of that during that time. But we encourage anybody to give us a call. I will say that we're not always sitting at the desk like what's being said. If that were the case, when you called Police Department, the local number at the three-nine-three-three-zero-two-eight, somebody would answer if we were sitting at the desk. We're not always sitting at the desk. Our police cars are equipped where you don't even have to check in at the town hall. I can operate from that squad car and have access to the nine-one-one center, have access to our ordinances. If you call the non-emergency number for the nine-one-one center, they will dispatch, they have to dispatch. Even if you call and say, you know what, I just can't get rid of, I can't get rid of that pesky hangman. They will send somebody to address your hangman. You may not like our answer, but nine-one-one center will send somebody out there. And all you have to do is give them that call. If anyone wants that, it's three-six-two-six-two-zero-five. And that is the non-emergency number for the nine-one-one center. That's not the phone tree that you get if you call the County Sheriff's Department, that's the nine-one-one center. Non-emergency, they'll dispatch you no matter what. Even if we don't have somebody out here, which unfortunately, we don't have the financial structure here to afford a twenty-four-hour, seven-days-a-week police department. But for seven days, I'd have somebody out here at least until three in the morning, every day. So, during those times, you can call. And even if we don't have somebody out here, if the nine-one-one center says it needs to have our attention, I'll get the phone call.
Well, I do have a question about that, because I have called the police, and I've called three times. The deputy has come out from the county, and it was before three o'clock.
Oh, before three in the morning?
Yes. It was like one o'clock each time.
Okay.
And they even arrested the person, so...
Without looking at the schedule, sometimes... Sometimes I may have an officer that's either out of training, or he's not in... To hire that third full-time officer, I had to dissolve the part-time budget. But in doing so, I have somebody out here consistently in the late evening hours when we seem to have a lot of our problems. But thank you for all the questions, thank you for the kind words, thank you for the negative words. Either way, we will get the problems addressed. If there's no further questions, I conclude my report.
Anybody here for utilities?
Yeah, I am.
All right, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, the thing that's been bothering everybody for the last few years is I have a big on Exeter and Meadowport. It will be fixed tomorrow, we can't put a plane in. We don't have a shut-off. There's no way to shut the main thing off, because and the genius who put all these older fire hydrants in did not really use them. Twenty-one breaks. You're screwed if you come up with a plane. So we think we got a plan. We got a Dinkelman Haveling, it's a minor one. It's on a vacant lot. And we're trying to get that fixed. We will have that fixed here tomorrow also. Working on the chicken plant water is taking up a lot of time from the gas that normally would be doing stuff here in town. They got a broken water main down there. That's got to be repaired, before we can run water today. We had to find where the water was. We finally found it. There's no map that shows you exactly where nothing is. You just, it's just intermittent. That's all you can do, you just try this, try that, try the other. We didn't stop for confidence, we just took the time. We spent quite a bit of time with them with, what's the name that I fit?
I got...
I got... We spent a lot of time with them today. They're changing the way that they want the forms to go out. So, the lady came up, she spent some time with him, to show him that he can handle it. The forms feel out. From one to like five. No, it was six.
Wow, okay.
It gets crazy, because you're putting everything on one form. They say, no, 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 you can't do that, you got to have a separate form for all of this garbage up there.
How long?
Oh, yeah. And she was, she had to teach you, we don't... So they changed it, now they change it.
Yes, Roselynn.
Terry, Terry made a comment earlier, probably earlier that hearing all the bad stuff on Facebook. How has our chlorine been testing?
How has our chlorine been testing? On water or what?
On water.
I told you, Roselynn.
I know, I know, but I want to document it.
Oh, did you hear that we got an award on our water quality?
I know we haven't passed yours, I would not be shocked if we got it again. We have always had good water quality, and for me to read that, that we had no chlorine in our water, it's like, nah, that can't work. I ignored that one.
Your stories like this.
I ignored that one.
If you have a question, don't leave.
Well, I wasn't too concerned, that's why I dropped tonight.
See, I see, I know.
I did.
We won the award this year, and we win it again next year. Henry gets to take a pile of our water to Washington D.C.
For a taste test?
For a taste test in the national.
But see, now, if I had asked that, that would be in your minutes tonight.
No, it wouldn't.
See, there you go.
Yes, Dave?
With all the water break-ins we've been having over the past few years, it's very grand. Towns are a pilot state, to have all the water lines replaced here in the high, because we're not just getting one or two. It seems like each year, we got more, and some of them are major, like the Cassie. After all, at least houses, most of them, were built in forty-two, so that's seventy-six years old, after most of these water pipes are back, and they're cast iron. And they rust, and...
Well, what happened over there at Cassie's, Dave, we couldn't find the shut-off, we used a map, we used everything. So what we did, we turned, we did sixteen shut-offs. Nothing worked. So what we had to do, we had to shut off the pump down at the water plant. We had to drain the little water tower to get the water to stop down at Cassie's. So then, once we got the water stopped, then we were able to fix it. But there's no rhyme or reason why you don't have shut-offs.
For a main?
Huh?
For a main?
They're just not working, they're just not working a lot. There was no shut-off for that deal over at Cassie's.
Was it a main or a line?
No, it was a main.
And the nineteen eighty-six maps are not accurate, or no good, or the mains are buried, or what?
They didn't, we used a map, and we hit sixteen different ones, sixteen different shut-offs. Nothing stopped the water, nothing slowed up the water. And the map was saying, this should do it. The map was lying, like lying through his teeth.
Yeah, because it was not accurate.
It was not accurate. We did everything we could think of.
And those were the ones that Bernie did?
I don't know.
I'm not sure who did them, but yeah, they had them out, and we're looking at them, and yeah, they tried every shut-off on there, and nothing worked.
There was a whole cluster of them in Earl's yard. In your yard, in our yard. We went in our yard to check.
It didn't work.
Yeah, we shut them off all over the place.
Down to, they went down to the church.
Yep.
Yours, hers, yeah, I mean, they were hitting everything.
Sixteen of them, we turned off, and nothing worked.
I mean, I know main then would be, those valves have to be used. You know, just like the fire hydrants are supposed to be turned on and off every six months to a year, the valves are supposed to be used. And that doesn't happen. So eighty-six of those valves, maybe they haven't been turned for, give or take, twenty to thirty years. So they could be frozen, you probably had some you couldn't even turn.
And we turned all of them.
You think you turned all of them?
Think you did. They turned. They turned, but they didn't do none. Now, whether or not something has broke down inside, we have no idea because we didn't go there. Because we had enough of a mess with the water.
Community Center, Mark?
The only thing I have is July third, I'm going to close for, because of the fourth. And then, don't forget bingo Friday night at six o'clock. Bring a two-dollar gift for the table. And then, after we're done playing bingo, we're going to turn it into Dirty Bingo and take your prize away.
And that's this Friday?
That's this Friday, six o'clock.
And that's for any ages?
Eighteen and above.
Eighteen. And it goes from six PM to whenever, presumably whenever?
Usually about eight o'clock, we're out of here. And I figured with us doing stuff with the toddlers at six PM to twelve, we need something for the adults.
How often are you doing the video, David?
I'm trying to do it at least twice a month, but it depends on when the... But it depends on when the building's rented. Because we couldn't do it last week because of it. And this week, this weekend, it's not rented, so we're gonna do it Friday night. For right now, until we get over the rentals for the summer, we're just gonna play it by ear. And I try to give everybody a week advance notice before they know, you know, when the next one is.
Go ahead, Inspector.
Yeah, just a little... Well, honey, I've been getting some bashing over social media. And I'm tired of it. Basically, I don't require contractors to be licensed on a board. Because all contractor, we... I require them to get a license from La Porte County. You go up to a courthouse, you wanna apply for a license, you have to show proof of insurance, liability. Not only that, they vet you to see that there's no complaints registered, bad workmanship, or anything like that. They bring in that piece of paper to the town board, to the town hall. They make a copy of it and it's on file. Twice in these last two years, I have stopped contractors from doing work because they weren't licensed. One of them got their license in twenty-four hours. That license costs a hundred and fifty dollars, people. So if they're a good contractor, they're not gonna be afraid to put that money up. The other one is gone. He was going to get arrested? No, that's the second one. The one who got arrested was two years ago, out of Chasterton. Doing some more inside house. And I couldn't see that by making a drive-by. Unless they... The people who had got a permit, they would have been required to get the La Porte County license. This guy's from Chester. He ended up getting in that gal's pocket for over ten dollars a ounce. He wasn't licensed in Porter County, he wasn't licensed in La Porte County. This poor person is standing in line to sue him. So I am out looking for them, looking out for everybody. And I do require that they're on file at the town hall. So I'm... This one person that keeps doing this all the time, I wish he was here.
Larry, I kind of disagree with you.
Yes.
In regard... Larry and I have a good working relationship together. He keeps me informed if there's any suspect contractors, which the ones that we've addressed. The one I've been able to bill a case on has been arrested. I have another one that's right now sitting in front of prosecutor's office waiting for charges and all that. But if a contractor comes to your house and they do not have a license, they're not even supposed to be negotiating any kind of price with you whatsoever. It's a misdemeanor offense just to negotiate before work's even done. So if you have that person that comes to your house, and I want to do this work for you, and it's like too good to be true... Yeah, again, again. It's too good to be true, it is. That's also part of the scam that they like to do, where one will come to your door and he'll say... I'll say "he" because the she's are smart enough not to do it. The guy will have his buddies go around back while the person's working on the homeowner. Go inside, either case the place out, or go inside and actually steal stuff out of the house. That has actually not happened here in Kingsbury Heights, but it has happened out in the La Porte County area. So just be very wary of these people. The one that Larry's talking about, she found them on Facebook and didn't vet them out. And now, I don't know if she's gonna get her ten thousand dollars back. Criminal court's not the court that you wanna get your money back. That's civil court. That's civil court, has its limitations.
Well, you did call a courthouse. I say the town case director has their own gun inspector, right? La Porte County Gun Inspector will not come in here and enforce town ordinances and codes. As I can do in La Porte County. I'll take state ordinances and codes and local ordinances and codes. That's where my enforcement is. But La Porte County has no jurisdiction in there. I just wanna make clear to everybody, if they don't think I'm doing my job, I'm sorry.
You think you're doing a wonderful job, Larry.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Insurance, they talked about contractors also required to have a bond.
Yes.
Right, you have to have both those things before you future.
I use my resources. That's why I ask for the La Porte County license. Because they have the sources, the way they can check into all this stuff. And if they pay that hundred and fifty dollars to bring that piece of paper to me to show it to me, I think they're pretty good.
Larry, one thing you should watch out for, because of all the years that John and I separately had different companies that we did rehabilitation of farmers' homehouses.
Yeah.
And with the town out here, and it was, you had to be licensed, bonded, and have insurance. They would get the insurance and the bond to start out with, but they wouldn't carry it through. They would present the information to a person like yourself, but it was only good for thirty days.
Yeah.
And then they're... So you have to watch them, things like that.
Well, they have to do that. The initial cost of a hundred and fifty dollars to get a license to renew it, that's all. If they're gonna work in La Porte County, it has to be a substantial cost.
When is the computers now, the county's watch man, they're on insurance? Is it good when it expires?
Yes.
They'll get your license quick. That's all I got.
All right. Fire Department?
I was asking you, I'm not for sure what... I know we have the raise to bring up. You guys have gotten the raise a couple of months ago in reference to that. That's just a yearly thing that's been going on due to cost and everything, a lot of increases in the insurance. Olivia did advise that you guys wanted to hear tonight to address some things, so that's why I'm actually here.
Well, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the public, from the last town ordinance. A lot of them feel that the only time the Fire Department shows up is when it's time for their contract renewal, and there's always a raise involved. Okay, I mean, this is coming from the public.
Okay. Well, and I'm here to address that. I'd be more than happy to address that. I have no issues whatsoever.
We would just... And sometimes there's public comment that they want, you know, answers from the fire station for different things. We can't answer. So we are just asking that somebody represent the Fire Department. We only have meetings once a month, once a month, if somebody can't come to a town board meeting and just represent the Fire Department, if there is any questions.
I've addressed this on several occasions that I have been at the board meetings. We're volunteers. We have jobs, we have families that we have to take care of. As a matter of fact, tonight I had to give up the shit that's costing me over two hundred and fifty dollars just to be here. Okay? We are volunteers. So unless people are planning on paying us to actually be here, I can't ask other volunteer... My phone number is up at the town hall. My business cards are up there. My... I don't... We meet every Tuesday. If anybody has any questions, you guys have the options to call me and ask me yourselves. I have no problem whatsoever talking to people and trying to work everything out. I can't be at all these meetings. It was a little bit easier when there was two meetings a month, but now it's even almost impossible. I work. As a matter of fact, I'm already running behind, and it's not due to you guys, it's because of the large meeting that you guys had today. So... And I'm not trying to be rude, but I put in a whole lot of time with the Fire Department. I'm on time, all time. Our training is there. We've got one of the best Fire Departments in this town. I do things a lot different than any other volunteer Fire Department. I require a lot more out of our volunteers. And they'll tell you that. I don't know what much more I can do for the community. I mean, the funds, we're very, very short on funds. I mean, if a truck breaks down, I don't have any money to pay for it. I have to take out other budgets as it is. So that's why I've been coming every year for the raises. I have it in my hand if anybody wants to see some of the surrounding areas on how low we actually are. Okay? We're down to sixty-three thousand dollars a year. Some of our fellow townships, our mutual aid township next door, Washington Township, Kingsbury. They... They're most of their... Almost seventy percent of their calls are our calls, because they have automatic mutual aid here. They send it seventy thousand dollars, over seventy thousand dollars a year. And they're owned by the township. We are contracted through you guys, so the money that we receive from all the public, that actually goes right back into the Fire Department. It actually pays for the trucks, the insurance, the workman's comp, the bills, the upkeep of all that stuff. Okay? And when we have a truck break down, I have to pull from a different budget, so I have to pull from our PPE budget. So that takes equipment out of firefighters, firefighters that truly need it. We have gear that's twelve years old. We're always supposed to use it for seven, according to NFA. Okay? I'm not for sure what else I can do as a volunteer. I'm not gonna ask any of those volunteers to come here and speak for me, because like I said, I've already dealt with repercussions in regards to interpretations that they make, that they say we can do. And then it falls back on me to actually try and fix. But I am available twenty-four seven. Just because I don't answer, okay? I'm gonna tell you how upset that I was just not too long ago. You guys can call me and I'm gonna return your phone call. It might not be that day, it might not be within that couple of hours. I work midnights. Most of the time, I work from two PM till six AM. So I'm not available a whole lot of times. But if you leave me a message, I am gonna call you back. I've not, never has not called somebody back. Don't leave a message at the station, because other people go in there, and I'm not trying to down my guys, but they hit the delete button, or they don't tell me that message gets through there, then I don't get it, then people get upset at me. My card is down at the business, is down at the town hall. I will give everybody a business card. If you ask me, I'll send you one. It has all my information. I don't have Facebook, because I can't stand Facebook, everybody knows that. I'm available for you guys, no matter what. I'm not ever not available for you. Call me. If you guys have questions outside this meeting, I don't think I should need to be here at every meeting. I do, according to our contract, I do show up from time to time to report on the Fire Department. There is nothing to report. The Fire Department is moving forward. If there is a tragedy in the Fire Department right now, I would be here to report it to you and tell you that we have some issues.
Well, one of the complaints was that several of the residents, when they had an issue, they had called the Fire Department. It's always been Kingsbury showing up. And nobody from our department showed up. So that's, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I've actually addressed this with you two personally, on a phone conversation, okay? And I've actually addressed it on Facebook, on the Fire Department's Facebook page, okay? We only have three first responders here. All three of them work midnights. When are most of our calls? Okay? There's the answer, all right? Unless we wanna renegotiate the contract for about ten or twelve thousand dollars or more per draw, I can't fund that program. The Fire Department, the first responder program is a completely one-hundred percent volunteer program. We do not have to participate in it. We do it for the community. Okay? The Fire Department is... Every person on our Fire Department is firefighter one and two, which according to state mandates, only mandates you can have mandatory. I require a little bit more, just as I said. Now, the first responder program is something completely different. So now, instead of the almost four hundred hours that they put into the firefighter one and two program, they gotta put an additional three hundred hours into a first responder program. Something that they don't wanna do. I can't force volunteers. I'm not going to force volunteers not to do it. I'm a first responder. Actually, we're down on the first responder. We only have two first responders right now. And we both work midnights. One works at the mill and I work the hours that I told you. We have an agreement with Kingsbury, Washington Township. Yes, that's been in place for twenty years, folks, so it shouldn't be news to you. They've been coming to calls if we can't go to them, and they have showed up to our calls. It doesn't necessarily... That's an agreement between us. It's not, that has nothing to do, and I'm doing it to protect the town itself. Okay? We don't have to. That's what I'm trying... And I'm not saying that we, that I'm not going to. But the funds that we use to fund that actual program come out of our fire budget. So if I can't get to where I need to be as far as with the raises and the fire budget, I severely have to cut first responder calls. That's one of the first things that has to go, unfortunately. And I'm not saying that I wanna do that. So you're gonna see Kingsbury trucks here. They're on every single call with us, for the most part. Okay? It is what it is. And that's just the same as with them. If we go on to their call, sometimes we're the only truck that's in their area. Okay? It's a mutual agreement between our two departments. It doesn't involve money, it doesn't involve anything. They're here to protect you, because the chief over there is basically just like I am. We care about the community and we wanna protect the community. But it shouldn't matter whether or not it says Kingsford Union or Kingsbury on the truck, not for first responder calls. If you can tell me one incident, one instance where the Kingsford Union Fire Department truck wasn't there on a fire call, then I would applaud you, because we've made, according to our contract, every single call.
Well, no, it wasn't... None of the complaints were due to any fire calls, it was first responders.
Medical calls, like I said, I wish I could tell everybody on our department, but we are volunteers. I cannot force these guys to go do something that they don't wanna do. I don't wanna do it. I don't like medical calls. I don't like dealing with manual bodies and stuff like that. But I have to. That's part of being a fire chief. But I can't force other people to do that. We're volunteers, guys. Eighty percent of the firefighters in this world are volunteers. And as much as I want to help you and do everything for you, I can't, I can't. I just can't. But by all means, if you guys have a solution, tell me. I mean, I'm more for it. But I don't have... I've even opened it up to just being first responders, coming on the Fire Department. But that also requires going through at least mandatory, because they're considered in hot zones on a fire. So they still have to do some sort of firefighter training regardless, and we don't have people banging down our doors. And it's... The Department of Homeland Security has made this job almost impossible.
Right, man?
Yeah.
Do you have any instructors that can teach the first responder course?
No, we... They do not let us. They... The La Porte County EMS does not allow us to do that. They require themselves to do that.
And then, what's the cost associated with something like that?
Usually, well, they don't cost... It doesn't cost anything, but you have to be a member of a Fire Department to go through EMS. Now, the ones that are out there, I think it's like three hundred, four hundred dollars to become an EMR.
Because I already have one officer that's a certified EMT.
Yep.
If I could get myself and that the games certified as first responders...
Then you guys would be able to go through the free class that Terry Youngman puts on for the...
So I could be here, it'd probably be something more than an equipment purchase that we have to... I'm already looking to get AEDs. Maybe that's something we can work out jointly, if you can give me that affirmation, and if we can do something together to get the first responder...
That actually gets my firefighters... Most of the time, my firefighters, if... There's a law with it. As an EMR, you can respond directly to the call and do the pre-patient care for the medics, okay? A firefighter can do that, but they cannot go on scene unless a trained paramedic or EMS provider is on scene. So yes, you might see that a firefighter comes in with the medics. That's because they have to wait for the medics to get there. Now, I will tell you, if it is a full arrest, if it is a serious condition, my firefighters are all trained to do CPR, so they've all been instructed that they can immediately go to the scene and do that. But for sick people calls, the throwing up, or, you know, they broke their finger and stuff like that, I can't send them on there, because it puts the Fire Department at a huge liability, not without being an EMR. Okay? But they are trained in the AED and CPR and stuff like that, so they can respond to cardiac arrests, seizures, stuff, breathing difficulties. Severe breathing difficulties. I'm not saying they can go to all of them, it just all depends on dispatch, what it is. And they've all been authorized to do that.
Okay. Well, I just, I know what we discussed in this conversation, and I have to put that out there, but hearing it from me is one thing, and they hear from you, it's totally, you know...
Well, like I said, my phone number's always out there. If you guys need it, again, you guys don't call the Fire Department, because I'm actually working on a different phone system for the Fire Department right now that'll actually forward this to... Kinda like the phone tree thing, if you wanna talk to the chief, then it'll actually just forward it right to my phone. I'm actually looking into something like that. However, right now, if you guys need me, you guys are gonna need to call my cell phone. I just, I don't... And like I said, I can't ask these guys to... Oh, I can't get them to put out a mobile address every time, so to come to a meeting is kinda... and pull the dress out at times, so to come to a meeting is kind of...
I'm asking, so what, is he asking that he be able to have an AED machine in his car?
He can have one regardless. The police department's...
So we only have any in town?
Yes, I do. The fire department has an AED.
So we only have one in town? One, that's all we have? Well, that's a little concerning. I am a cardiac nurse, and that seems a little concerning to me.
We're all certified in CPR, adult infant, and AED. We still have an AED. And I believe the school, believe the school, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the school does have one.
I mean, I think that would be one thing that we should...
The places, some of the places that have our public places, yes, we have more than one AED. The fire department does have an AED. Soon they have two, hopefully. But again, they're not just, you know, as a matter of fact, there might be something that the department board can look to put one right in here because technically there should be one in here, this is a public place.
Correct. Yeah, that's a good idea. I think we need to, I like that.
I'm here for you guys. I honestly, truly am. As a matter of fact, a couple months ago, I actually considered retiring at the end of the year. I was talked out of that. You guys, I run this fire department pretty strict. I really do. I require a lot more out of our guys than anything. And I'm telling you guys right now, you guys have some of the most highly trained firefighters in this county. I have policies and procedures in place that only, that only career fire departments have. No other volunteer fire department has that kind of stuff.
Have you ever asked any of your guys that they would want to represent the fire department at the town board meeting?
I can, but like I said before, if they come here and say something that they shouldn't say, or if they represent it, something different than what it is...
You have to trust your guys to say what you want to say.
You're absolutely right. But if you're working on a project and you work on different things, would you send somebody else in your place that doesn't know anything about it?
If I needed somebody to represent what I stand for, yeah.
Okay. Ma'am, we're volunteers. A lot of our guys, listen to what I'm saying, because you roll the eyes at me and...
I'm not rolling my eyes, I'm just saying, you should respect your guys and trust them.
I do. I trust them on a fire call, I do. None of them want to do the administrative part, otherwise I would have been able to retire at the end of this year. Nobody wants the position that I'm in because of how much work it actually takes to be in this position.
Well, I was, I was told that you had told your guys not to come to the meeting.
No, I never said that. Okay, and I'm telling you that straight up. Whoever told you that is mistaken. They can come to the meeting, however, I have asked them not to, not to represent anything at the fire department when it comes to that because they want to speak, they can speak. But if it comes to a question, then it should, it should be directed towards me because they may not know how to answer that question. And if they answer it wrong, I'm the one who has to, has to, has to deal with that.
So it's because they're not all in the know?
That's true.
You were the only one in the know?
No. There's a couple other ones in the know, however, they don't want to be here. That's what, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how, I don't know how much, how much I can put that. The people that, that should know what they're doing don't want to be here to begin with. There's a lot of difference. You can't, I can't get people to do something that they don't want to do. Some people want to be here, however, they're not, you're right, they're not in the know-how of exactly the actual, how the fire department actually works on an administrative level. They are firefighters, that's all they want to be. They don't want to do anything else. They want to be called the captain and the lieutenant and everything, but they don't want to actually put forth the effort and everything and get into, into it.
Do you have an assistant?
Yes, I do.
Okay, who is that?
Does our police department carry Narcan?
I can actually explain probably the reason on that. Go ahead. It is a financial reason. Okay? The fire department can't afford it and the medics do not replace that. So you're talking about 30, $26 to $32 a hit. I can't afford that. I simply can't afford that. And when you're doing two hits, we, we as first responders and police can do two hits. You're talking about $60 per call. 80% to 90% of our calls are medical calls and you guys have already known what the statistics are as far as overdoses are. I can't afford that for every single time somebody overdoses.
It might be a good thing out here if they don't, if everybody knows that there is not Narcan available.
There is not Narcan, I do not have Narcan. I can't, we can't afford it.
I think that's the nice thing, you need to let everybody know. That'll keep a few kids from not deciding to play with the game.
I, from a police department standpoint, as far as medical calls, I think the AED device would be very beneficial. I know at least two saves. One was gold green. We were there in less than a minute. And when it's cardiac, minutes, we never...
I totally agree.
Two cases, so as a matter of fact, I had to hit Mr. Parkman up and said, hey, free up some of that money here and see if you can help me out with an AED. So maybe sending out a letter or something to try and get that.
Well, maybe we could even try donation. I mean, I think that if everybody knew how important it is to have an AED there as quickly as possible, and if we have a policeman on until 3:00 in the morning, and whoever is on would have an AED right there, I think we could accomplish something like that with donations possibly, if we spread that out.
I will put something like that.
Think it's a good idea?
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, I gotta go, I gotta go work.
This is the second reading for ordinance number 2018-5. An ordinance repealing the existing dog ordinances and replacing the ordinances with a comprehensive animal ordinance.
What are you, living ordinance?
Well, it's a comprehensive ordinance. So it encompasses a whole bunch of things, like people raising chickens. I found something in the old ordinance that was under zoning and didn't fit the language that we needed. So we got the language of raising chickens or ducks or goats, people not do that. And then on the dog side, and then on the dog side, we don't charge for breed specific because we do have bittles on here and about 99% of them are very good meat eating dogs. We shouldn't have to have those people pay an exorbitant amount of money when the pachyloph is worse than the bittles. So comprehensive, so basically what it does is your dog would not be considered a vicious animal based on its breed. It will be determined as a vicious animal based on the activity that you have. If you have a lot of, dogs always getting out, the dog has a bite on file with the health department. Those things will be considered. That person will now have to pay the additional fee for the animal.
They need to have insurance on it because those people, whoever gets bitten by one of those bittles is going to have extensive...
Right. And the thing is, is that people think that they put the beware of dog sign out, that they're going to be covered. I'll tell you right now, you're going to lose that in civil court every time because by having that sign out there, you're admitting of the dangerous present propensities of that dog. So maybe dog on premises, but not no beware, beware of dog.
Rich? My daughter is going to be upset. Just to kill that chicken.
Well, I'm a chicken farmer myself.
This is also the second reading of ordinance number 2018-6. An ordinance establishing the standards for the quarter ditch sewer layout.
I make the motion to pass this ordinance 2018-6. All in favor? We have a fire protection agreement for 2018 in the amount of $35,426.
I make the motion that we accept the fire protection agreement. I'm not moving against it.
All in favor? The motion for the preservation of claims in the amount of $206,469 at three sets.
Second.
All in favor? We have any previous council visits?
I don't think so.
Can you come to visit? Okay. Should I term you out tonight due to illness? Any other questions? I appreciate everybody coming this evening. I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting?